We'll leave it up to the city attorney and the trustees to decide whether they want to look at the notes and the last draft that was circulated, or if you want to bring this item back up at a later meeting with the contract in full form.
Robert, if I understand this from talking to you also is that I could have swore early on in this conversation we had with Warren that we committed to doing this earlier, correct? That we would take care of any environmental issues that came up on the property that were not known at the time that this project started, correct?
That's correct.
Why do we keep on seeing this then? If we agreed to that earlier, why do we have to keep on going through this process? Because why, if we agreed to it earlier, why do we have to agree to it again?
They want to be indemnified against further action that could result from any environmental problems associated with the leaking of the four storage tanks that was at this corner. Until they have a letter from the Corporation Commission saying that it's clean, which could come months down the road, or until this agreement is signed, they do not want to take title to the property. They don't want to close on the property. The closing is necessary before the permits are issued so they can start construction.
So if I understand this right, we agreed to do this. We just didn't get in the original contract, basically.
We agreed to do it with the expectation that everything would be taken care of long before the building permits were issued. But the tanks were removed before we acquired the property. The tanks were removed in April, I believe, of 2017. Additional testing was done at the site that revealed there was some gasoline or gasoline residual. So there was additional soil borings that had to occur. And that's what happened on, test wells were drilled on the 21st of December, which led to an extended case instead of closing it at that point.
So we're not being asked to do anything we haven't already agreed to. We're just being asked to put it in writing, basically, is what I understand. And if I, from reading the memo, we're not out any money on this because the Corporation Commission's going to foot the bill. Is that correct?
You're correct on both counts.
Mr. City Attorney, are we clear to go? Or do you suggest we wait until we have the hard copy?
Robert and I have discussed is that the indemnification paragraphs are left open-ended. They don't go to the final letter that closes everything out. And they had an issue with that unless something's changed since I had looked at it last. Robert has it?
These are the words that I got from Ron Hardin, the attorney for Midwest City Warren Theater Incorporated. "We approve the document." I'm not sure exactly how that document looks. I have to assume that it was the last file that you and I saw that was transmitted back and forth between Mr. Chalice and Mr. Hardin with the corrections that we had requested. I can't say that for a fact because I don't have it in front of me.
Well, what I would recommend then is, I don't have a problem with the council approving it. Subject to a final inspection of the final document, make sure it's what we agreed to do. If they haven't given us back to us yet, I'd want to see it before we agree to it.
Phil, are there any other contracts or issues out there? Like, in my opinion, this should have been dealt with months ago. It should have been in the original deal. Especially if we told them we were going to do this. It doesn't, I guess I just don't understand why we're seeing it again because we've already committed to doing this. Is there anything else out there that, that you think that we need to get ahead of so that we don't, in two or three months, something else doesn't come back?
If I may answer that, this is, this is not our request for this agreement. This request comes from Warren's attorney in addition to what was already approved.
That's why it's back up. They wanted an environmental agreement. And they, they prepared that and sent it to us. So it's not us trying to add more or trying to, this is them wanting to try to lock the city in even, even more and trying to define certain terms on what the exposure is on this thing. And the way it was written when I first read it, and I think Robert's saying that Chris Chalice made some changes, but it left it open-ended that even after the DEQ did that final letter and released everything, they still wanted to hold the city liable for 10 or 15 years from now. Something environmental comes up, we're going to be responsible for it. And that's what I had a problem with.
Well, and in paragraph 3.1, they also wanted to have final approval, approval of what was in, of what was in the Corporation Commission letter. And we just didn't think that that was going to be possible to dictate to the state what they put in their closing documents. And that was one of the things that we wanted stricken from it.
And I'm not against it. I just don't want something else to happen two or three months from now.
Again, Mr. Anderson.
Well, I mean, I could suggest that you do a motion to approve the environmental agreement contingent on our approval of their final wording that they sent to us that we haven't received yet. And so if you want to do that contingent on my review and the city manager's review of the final draft they sent to us, then I would say that you can go ahead and make your motion for us to go ahead and execute that agreement if it meets all of our terms.
And then we will not have to see this come across our desk after that.
Not unless they submit another agreement for us to consider.
Chair would entertain a motion.
My question goes to Robert. The issue that you raised with regard to the removal of the tanks to be demolished. I'm confused right now because there's a lot of structure. Did you remove the tanks from those places?
The, I'm not certain of who the actual contractor was, but they were contracted by the seller, the Veloedman family is my understanding.
So when we purchased the property, do we have any rights to try to recede any costs associated? Or are we just going to go on with it?
This is, this is common in the UST indemnity fund. We're not the ones that stuck the tanks there or operated the filling station after they were in the ground. So that the, as in the notes, we're covered up to a million and a half. And in our agreement with, in our meeting with the Corporation Commission, and I'll quote, "They didn't think that this site was that bad and they thought it would be a lot less than the 1.5 million that we've, that we've got to work with." We don't expect anything out of pocket. It's just the time involved to clearance versus the schedule for construction on the theater and the bids that are already out there for materials and workmanship.
And so we're essentially following up on our promise for...
Sorry. We're essentially following up on the commitment that we made initially that we would take care of any environmental concerns that would be raised. That was Councilman Burns' comment, correct?
You're exactly right.
And if we go ahead and approve this subject to our city attorney and the city manager's approval of it, unless Warren comes up with a completely different agreement, then it won't come before us. And they can go ahead and close on the property and proceed with the contractors that they have to do the work to start theater construction, correct?
We're working on a couple of points that are part of the closing. We have an easement that we've got to execute and some other minor things. This is the biggest thing standing in the way at this point.
And again, this is something that they drafted and sent to us. It wasn't something that we came up with at the last minute.
So once again, the chair would entertain a motion.
Yeah, based upon the wording by our city attorney and the actual wording of, to meet the approval and all that, move to approve.
Second.
A motion is second. Any further discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? Motion carries. There any further discussion on this agenda? Hearing none, we're hereby adjourned. I call to order the Midwest City Municipal Authority. We have one discussion item. Go ahead with that.
This is discussion consideration of adopting a resolution relating to the incurred of indebtedness of an, of an aggregate amount of not to exceed $50 million pursuant to the terms of the replenishment agreement with the Midwest City Economic Development Authority and Bank First as trustee authorizing and approving a replenishment agreement and authorizing other documents and agreements as may be necessary or required and containing other provisions relating thereto. We have in the audience our assembled team, so to speak, on this project. I'm going to ask Greg Nito if Greg would come up and kind of give the, give the trustees a, an overview of the general approach on the, on the proposed bond issue and why it's necessary to, to wrap several entities into this bond issue.
Well, thank you, Guy. And for those, I'm Greg Nito with the Baker Group and you're municipal advisor. And what I'm going to do is just kind of try to go through this and hit the highlights. It's been a very lengthy labor of love, as you all have been involved in. And it's a pretty unique situation. What we're doing basically is, is there's a couple of different entities that are incurring, one is incurring indebtedness and the other one is backstopping it, basically. And why we put together this structure, number one is to hopefully drive the cost of borrowing down. And by doing so, that will reflect in the city reaping more benefits off the annual revenues off the project. And also enable us to secure, I think you've all been through this, but to secure a 30-year fixed rate financing, fixed term, fixed interest rate, 30 years callable in probably eight years, maybe nine. That's a subject to negotiations. But we, we put together this structure to limit as much as we could the city and municipal authorities involvement and liability. It's basically saying that in the event we have a shortfall off the revenues of the project, now that, we have to go a long ways before that should actually happen, that we're saying, we're going to backstop this. We're going to put in money into a replenishment agreement in the event, and it's going to be two or three months. That's, and I'll get into the details of the resolution in a minute. But it's going to be that so we can hopefully, in, in the event that something catastrophic should happen, we can keep the project going and maintain it while we work our way out of any issues. Who knows what's going to happen in the future? But right now, with a structure like this, we can, think we can get a really, really competitive interest rate and benefit all parties. One of the things in your resolution, just a little bit of a highlight, it's, it calls for $50 million. Currently, we anticipate around 47 to 47.5 million. There's a cushion in there in the event that the rating agencies come back and say, if we have a larger, a little bit larger reserve fund or, or a replenishment fund, we might be able to get a better rating, et cetera, et cetera. So there's a little bit of cushion. But we anticipate right now, less than 50, around the 48 million tops. Same with the interest rate. The interest rate, I think, is what, John, 6%? We expect to be well, well under that. But if something crazy happens and we have to, you know, work some magic or whatever, we might have to do that. But that is, in a nutshell, is what we're looking at authorizing tonight. We've got the timeframe. We've got the deadlines of additional expense. If we don't get into closing this by the end of February, barring anything really crazy, we think that is fully, we're fully capable of getting that done. Now then, once we do this, then there will be an agreement with the entity itself. We're going to borrow the money, pay off the 4086. Then there's going to be an additional agreement between the two parties, and it's going to be Sooner and the Economic Development Authority. Let's start getting too many, there's so many attorneys and authorities, even I get confused. But anyway, so those will come down the pike also. But all, all this does is authorizes us to proceed. Something could, and again, I always like to stress, something crazy could happen. You know, there's a speech, there's a speech going on tonight that could have impact on markets and everything else. We don't know, but we believe, really, we wouldn't be here if we didn't think we could get this accomplished. So I'll be glad to answer any questions that you might have. It's a pretty complicated, and it's an extremely complicated transaction. I'm trying to just boil it down to, to the essentials that are involved.
Thank you, Greg. John, Mr. John Wideman, he's behind counsel. Anything you would like to add, John? You drove all the way over from Tulsa, so you might as well say something.
Sure, I might as well say something. Somebody might get up and tell me to go home. I'll look behind my back. John Wideman, Hillborne Wideman, Tulsa, Oklahoma. Yeah, we have a resolution in front of the Municipal Authority, which is the agenda we're looking at now. There's a resolution for the Economic Development Authority. And there's two resolu, I'm sorry, two resolutions for the city council. And if you approve these resolutions, then you're authorizing the mayor and the chairman of the Municipal Authority, the chair of the Economic Development Authority, to execute and deliver documents in their final form. That means that if they are within the parameters of the resolution, which the interest rate is six and a half, I just looked, not to exceed six and a half, not to exceed 30 years, and not to exceed $50 million. As Greg told you, we expect it to be less than 50 million, less than 6.5% and probably right at 30 years. So within those parameters, you're authorizing the chairman on advice of council to execute and deliver documents and proceed with the transaction. So we are, the, well, not for this authority. The next, the Economic Development Authority will need all six votes to proceed.
What is, what is a bond placement agreement?
Yeah, the bond placement agreement, that has been changed now to a bond purchase agreement. It was originally thought, since this is a taxable transaction, that there would have to be a placement of the bonds, which is a Reg D offering under the Securities Commission. But underwriters' council has reviewed that and determined that we can do a normal bond purchase agreement. And the bonds will be underwritten completely by the underwriter, which means the process is, we'll go to the rating agency. We'll get a rating. We'll come back. We'll get into the market. The underwriter will get into the market to price the bonds. And then in that process, we'll determine what the interest rate is going to be for the bonds. And there will be serial bonds and term bonds. He'll go out and see how many of those he can sell, up to the 50 million. If he gets 40 million sold, he's likely to underwrite, which means that he would give you the total amount, the 50 million, underwrite 10 million out of his back pocket to sell later and deliver the other 40 million. So this, we've changed that to a bond purchase agreement, which would require the total purchase of the bonds by the underwriter and the delivery of the full purchase price to you.
The reason I ask is that on one of the memos from Mr. Hanson, it says that the bond placement agreement is not yet finalized and will be provided as soon as possible. So I was questioning, why are we getting this if all the paperwork's not in front of us?
We forwarded that, that, we substituted the bond replacement agreement with the bond purchase agreement. We sent that out to you all yesterday. We got that yesterday and sent it out as quickly as we could. I'm sorry?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, no.
Right, so you, the resolution anticipates that you are approving the form of documents. You're approving the form of the indenture, the form of the bond purchase agreement and the form of the replenishment agreement. The actual interest rate won't be determined until that pricing mechanism is gone through.
And, and let me underscore, I, and I tried to communicate that to, to you all in the, in an email on Friday. We understand that this is a huge amount of material that we've asked you to, to digest in a very, very short period of time. And if you're not ready to act on it, we understand that. I'm, I'm not trying to, we're not trying to, to force this when you all aren't prepared and, and ready to act on it, so.
Sorry, we are a very short timeframe. So I'm ready to vote affirmative. But if we don't have all six that are, because they want to read it, when do we have to have our next meeting to keep with this very, very small time window that we've got?
I would, I'm going to, going to jump in here and John, correct me if I'm wrong. I, you know, we're, we have a, we have a financial penalty that comes due on March 1. That is, we as, as actually Sooner Town Center has that financial penalty. You know, I, I think we could probably delay it a week and still... Okay, Greg, Greg is jumping up, so, excuse me. No, it's hard to see when you jump up.
So if we delay this a week and it puts us out accidentally to March 2, what's the, what's the penalty that he was talking about?
Lisa, do you recall the, is it a half a percent? And so that's going to be a half a percent off of $38 million? So it'd be $190,000.
Who pays that?
It would be, I, yeah, I'm...
Two months' salary.
Yeah. Is it Sooner Town Center? Okay, STC.
If I may, I just want to make a couple of comments as far as marketing is concerned. And John does a great job. I'm going to get into a little bit more of the financial aspect of it. The Reg D, the semantics of a bond purchase agreement. We had discussions at the end of last week and beginning to get this changed because what it allows the underwriter to do is hit a lot broader spectrum of potential purchasers of the bonds. Everything we do in conjunction with this is doing, one thing, is to drive the rate down and limit the amount of risk you have. One thing, my concern is, the street is a fairly, the street, the financial markets, is a pretty vicious area. If we push this back too long, in my opinion, and they know that, I mean, it's public knowledge. If they know there's a potential time crunch, they are very capable of sitting back going, I may have to charge you a little more if you really want to get this done. I mean, the reason I say that is because I've seen it happen. And, and you know, if you're not comfortable, I totally understand. It's a big chunk. I'll try to answer any more questions that you might have because we, it's something that we put together and we obviously wouldn't be here if we didn't recommend moving forward with it. But I totally understand also. But that's one of the things we look at, the timing. You can, you can delay it a week, of course. I think we're going to have to hold the hand of the rating agencies to walk them through this because it's not a geo bond, it's not a water and sewer bond. It's a different animal. But those are the little things I wanted to just throw in there, so.
Follow up Greg before you leave.
Yes, ma'am.
So if we vote to approve this evening for you all to go forward, if there should be a substantial change, then that is an issue that would come back to us if it's substantial? Or just with regard to this at this point, you're... I am, thank you.
Yes, you are, no, you're authorizing the chair to make those decisions. So this is, this is really for, this is an approval saying that the Economic Development Authority, the Municipal Authority and the city are ready to proceed with the transaction. That allows Greg and the underwriter to go to the rating agency and proceed. If there are changes that are outside these parameters, we definitely have to come back to get approval. But if there are changes to the documentation, that would be done through the city attorney and us and through the chair. So if there were changes to documentation that you wanted to make in the next week or so, or all the way to closing, you could tell the chair that and, or staff and get those changes addressed and/or questioned. So you have the ability to continue to review the form documents. And they will be changing. They will change. They will change as we negotiate them. And they will change as the bondholders come back with what they're going to require and, and the interest rates and so on and so forth. It's a moving target. So we approve the form of the document, authorize the chair to execute and deliver at closing. But in between, any comments that you have would be directed to us or through your city attorney or city manager and staff.
Okay, and I apologize not to belabor the point, but let me just clarify my question. So right now, we're talking about, you know, we've got documents that have got holes in them, essentially. And I, and I get this is a moving process, a moving target. But you're looking at a range, you're trying to give us a range of, you know, the rate won't exceed 6.5%. The total exposure, we believe, to be, you know, less than 50 million. And yet, we truly believe it to be, I don't know, 43 to 45, Greg, help me.
Forty-seven, forty-eight.
Sorry. You know, so my question goes to, as long as we're still sort of, excuse the analogy, but swimming in that pool, you know, we're voting to go forward. If that pool should dramatically change and now, you know, it's going to be nine and a half and the exposure is $75 million, then that comes back before us.
Absolutely. Yeah, absolutely, it'd have to come back.
We're not seeing the cap.
If you're outside of the six and a half or outside of the 30 years or outside of the 50 million, it definitely has to come back.
Okay, that's my question.
I'm sorry, I keep forgetting to push my button. Those caps, 30 years, six and a half, 50 million, that's in writing. If the chairman decides he's going to do something just absolutely insane, he still couldn't approve more than that if he tried, correct?
That is correct. That is correct. Because, and I'll step in...
I mean, you might try and do something insane. I was just making sure that we had a stopgap in place.
From a bond purchasers, from, they would never exceed the exposure set out in here. And Susan, if I may, this is a very, very common practice. 95% of the time we do bond issues, it's from, it's, it's for not to exceed figures. Those particular figures that we talked about, there's no way we could get anybody to loan another dime beyond that 50 million because they're jeopardizing the loan back. So that is in concrete, basically. I think what we're talking about is call provisions. Normally, that's a negotiating tool with the bonds, the bond purchaser. You know, instead, we might be able to get an eight-year call, seven, nine-year call. That's subject to negotiations. The term bonds, whether there's term bonds, cereals, those kinds of things, but...
So explain the call, eight or nine years.
Yes, sir. You have a 30-year issue. Right now, amazingly enough, we're able to get some very, what I consider, short-term calls. That is, and I'll use eight years as an example. Anything after eight years, at the end of eight years, we can call. That is, if we have any other revenue source or if we want to do restructuring or anything, we can pay off the remaining... we can pay off the remaining twenty-two years of debt.
With no penalty?
Without a penalty. So that's, that's a very advantageous, and, and that's a subject to, we might be able to get a little shorter or we might get... This all is negotiations that I kind of do with the underwriters and everybody else. You know, we, we might say, okay, will you knock ten basis points off the rate if we'll give you a nine-year call? Duh, I mean, those are things, it's just a function of the numbers. But that's what, Susan, that's, it's, it's very extremely common to have not exceed nothing. We would never, ever try to go out to the market without coming back to council on anything that exceeds even a cent in here in the resolutions.
One thing that, why this is, would be helpful if, if we were to act on it, if you all were to act on it this evening, would be, it would, it would authorize them to move forward with the rating. And, and that is probably the most time-consuming piece of this, this puzzle. Now, in doing that, when, when, when that proceeds, the, the S and P rating, whether it's S and P or who's the other one?
Moody's is the other one, we'll use S and P.
E, either one of those, those companies are gonna require a fee in order to do the rating. In this case, it's about seventy-five thousand dollars. So when we move forward with this, it, it will be with the understanding and that fee will be wrapped into the bond issue amount. But we will be, we will be obligating ourselves for that, that seventy-five thousand dollars.
Yes, sir, that is correct. You'll have an engagement letter with them right at the onset. And all of the fees, expenses, and everything else are in the bond issue itself.
Okay, I, sorry Greg, bear with me for just a second. Where, what you referenced is in section six of that. Do you have a copy of that by chance on paper? Because what I'm looking at, I'm missing something.
It is section six of the Economic Development Authority Resolution. I say, I say six, that's where it usually is, let me look.
Yeah.
It's spread. Okay, that's what I missed, something about that.
Yeah, I think that language is actually gonna be in the next meeting.
It's forty-two.
The different trust.
This is the Economic Development Authority. Well, I'll just get the paper copy of it, sorry.
Yeah.
That's the joy of... Six and a half, right out. Okay. One page around, one twenty-three, okay? Okay. Because the other ones don't have...
Right, so that's, that's in the Economic Development Authority Resolution because they are the ones that are incurring the indebtedness and selling the bonds.
Is there any further discussion on this particular item? No, that's all right. Good discussion.
If you don't mind, I'd like to have John Williams come up and address the, the authority about the public purpose side of this work. And I'm, I'm, I'm calling John and I didn't tell John to expect this, so.
That's okay with John. Well, I, this is an unusual transaction. It's, it's not your typical revenue bond issue. And there's a form of, of credit support coming from the municipal authority that, by which the municipal authority is, is becoming a bit of a guarantor of, of, of the bonds. They're not really a guarantor, guarantor of the bonds, but they're going in that direction. And so it's necessary for them to be compensated. And that's the public purpose element. And the compensation that's been worked through, that appears in your resolution, is there are numerous public benefits to the, the further success of the town center in terms of tax revenues. And also, we're still trying to avoid default under the forty-eighty-six loan where the interest rate goes to twelve percent, which would eliminate the, the monthly rental revenues that we receive from our ground lease. So that's a public purpose and that's recited in your resolutions. Furthermore, there'll be a cash fee and that cash fee will be paid by the borrower and that will go directly to the municipal authority. And that cash fee, we believe we've, we've, it's kind of complicated what, what it is we've negotiated, but it's one that is, is not nominal, it's significant. And that cash, so that's an additional manifestation of public purpose.
Thank you, John.
Thank you. With that being said, the chair would entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion on the side? Hearing none, all in favor, indicated by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention. Chair recognizes that the motion carries. No further business on this agenda. I adjourn the Midwest City Municipal Authority and call to order the Midwest City Economic Development Authority. We have one discussion item.
This is discussion consideration of adopting a resolution authorizing the issuance of Midwest City Economic Development Authority Economic Development Revenue Bonds, Town Center Plaza Project Taxable Refunding Series 2018 in an aggregate amount of not to exceed fifty million dollars, waiving competitive bidding on said bonds and authorizing the sale of the bonds at a discount, authorizing and approving a bond placement agreement, trust indenture replenishment agreement, and authorizing other documents and agreements as may be necessary or required, authorizing a preliminary and final offering document and containing other provisions related thereto. So this is the actual entity that would be the bond issuer. Greg, anything you want to add?
This is where all the details come into play. And the only thing that I get squeamish about is when John uses the word default. Don't, don't talk about default. We're talking about bonds, anyway. No, I'd be glad if any other questions have come up. The one thing that always is a question is the waiving competitive bidding. There is no way that we would ever be able to competitively bid this structure. I mean, they, they just go for two reasons, timeframe and explaining. There is nobody that would step up and allow us to work with them on structuring the way we have it structured. So that's why it's, it's waiving competitive bidding and negotiating.
And this is the actual resolution that allows us to go forward with this whole proceeding, correct?
That is correct, yes, sir.
Is there any further questions? Any further discussion?
And, and the waiving of the competitive bidding requires the six votes.
Yes, sir, it does.
Yes, sir, we may.
Move to approve.
I have a motion and a second. City Clerk, go ahead and contact or conduct a roll call vote. Contact and conduct.
One, Ward one?
Yes.
Ward two?
Yes.
Ward three?
Yes.
Ward four?
Yes.
Ward five? Yes, mayor.
Yes. According to my calculation, motion carries, correct? Motion carries. There are no further discussion items on this agenda. I hereby adjourn and call to order the special meeting of the Midwest City Council. We have two, three discussion items on this agenda.
First item is discussion consideration of accepting the financial audit of the city Midwest City as of and for the year ended June thirtieth, twenty seventeen. You have a memo from Christie Baron, our finance director, transmitting the audit report. And we also have Jake Winkler, who is with RMS, here to give you all an overview of the results of the audit. I want to thank RMS, they did a, did a, an excellent job. And also want to make sure that we recognize our finance department. We have, we have one of the finest finance departments in the, in the state of Oklahoma, I feel. We have, four of our staff members are actually CPAs. And that is pretty exceptional, given the size of, of our department. So Christie has done a, done a great job taking over Judy, Judy Siemens and continuing the great tradition down there. So Jake, with that, I'll let you get into it.
Thank you, Mr. Hanson. I actually prepared a, just a, kind of a high point presentation of the financials so we're not gonna thumb through everything in the financial statement document because I know that even as an auditor, those things can be hard to get through. Just going to page one here. You guys, City of Midwest City did receive an unmodified opinion this year, which is the highest level of assurance that you can actually give as an auditor. There is an emphasis of matter related to a restatement that we will discuss later in note seven of the financial statements. We did not have any changes in our audit plan. And the audit was performed with auditing standards generally accepted in the United States as well as government auditing standards. The major funds that we reviewed this year on page two were the general fund, which is always a major fund, the police fund, the fire fund, the Midwest City Hospital Authority. And as far as the proprietary funds, it was the Midwest, Midwest City Municipal Authority. Page three, just, here's where we'll discuss the restatement. It related to the Sooner Rose land transaction last year. There was a two-point-one million dollar balance that was recorded as an investment in the previous period that should have been expensed as an economic development expense for the hospital authority. Basically, there was some new information that came to light this year and some, just due to the transition of the finance directors in the previous period. There was, you know, I think this was, all the transaction actually happened even before Christie came on. It was actually something where we kind of discussed it with everybody in the prior year and just some misunderstanding in terms of the previous finance directors and how the land was actually going, whether this was actually going to be title that was acquired by the city or whether this was actually something that was going to be just a regular expense. So Christie actually was the one that did some additional research on this and found that it should have been an expend, an expense in the prior year. So we restated the beginning net position because of that.
Christie, if I'm, Jake, if I'm, we, we made that modification to the financial statements three or four months ago, I, I believe.
Yes. Additionally, we actually consolidated four other enterprise funds into the municipal authority this year. That would be the Utility Services Fund, the Utilities Capital Fund, the Customer Deposit Fund, and the Golf Course Fund. Municipal Authority is currently already managing those as an organ, as a board. So we felt that it was probably more appropriate to include those in there. Note thirteen, just, this is something I do want to call attention to the council. We, is, discusses the implementation of GASB statement number seventy-five. This is gonna take effect next year. We're gonna go into a slide here momentarily that'll kind of discuss the impact of that. There are other pronouncements outlined in note thirteen that would relate to the city. However, we don't believe there's gonna be any material impact for those. So on GASB statement number seventy-five, if you look at page five of the presentation, currently, your other post-employment benefits, your liability for that plan, which includes basically the health insurance that you provide to your retirees, your current liability for that is nine-point-seven million dollars. In the previous period, it was nine-point-five. However, once GASB statement number seventy-five is implemented, there is a, in required, in your required supplementary, supplementary information, there is an actuarial accrued liability related to your OPEB that is going to actually say, here is the actual liability that you will owe for all employees that could be covered under this plan. That current liability is twenty-two million dollars. That is what, that in theory will be what is recorded under seventy-five, under GASB statement seventy-five. That is actually what will be recorded next year as a liability on your book. So your liability for OPEB was gonna go from nine-point-seven million dollars to actually, it's gonna be in excess of twenty-two million dollars because you can see a bullet point down here. The liability is going to probably be higher because the discount rate that you're currently using on your OPEB plan is like four-point-three-five percent. But GASB statement seventy-five requires you to use the municipal bond rate, which is much closer to one percent, which means, and that's because you guys don't have any assets held in trust for the OPEB plan. So in other words, that liability, I can't tell you what the number would be. I'm not an actuary, thankfully. But what I, what I will say is that it is going to be probably, you know, quite a bit higher than the twenty-two million dollars that's actually the accrued liability currently.
And that has to do with our, our retiree health insurance offering?
Correct, yeah. Yeah, so essentially because, I'll try and do this high level here. Essentially because you're paying a certain rate, okay? Your retirees are allowed to buy back in. You guys actually provide a subsidy for your retirees. Even if you didn't, the theory is that essentially the employees that are currently employed are paying a higher rate for their health insurance than they would be required to if they, you were not also insuring your retirees. Okay, so essentially, your premiums have been elevated by the fact that you have retirees who are buying into a group rate. Does that make sense? So it's essentially, you have an implicit rate subsidy that you are guaranteeing to your current employees because they will be able to buy into the same plan. That's the idea behind it.
Essentially, it all, it includes the retirees plus the possibility of all the employees being on the same base.
Yes, yeah. I mean, it, the, conceptually, it's very similar to the pension plans. It's, it's not just what you physically owe right now. It's what you're going to owe in the future based upon what people have been paying with the understanding they're gonna get that benefit in the future. So. On page six, we did have one material weakness. This all also relates to the restatement, so I won't go into a lot of detail there. We've kind of already discussed it. Page seven, this kind of goes into the required communications, which you guys would also have. We did not have any significant issues that we had to discuss with management. We had no disagreements with management, no difficulties encountered during the audit, and we did not have any uncorrected misstatements. So you guys should be very pleased with that, that's very good. In terms of consultations with your other accountants on page eight, Crawford and Associates prepares your financial statements. That's the only other consultations that we're aware of. On page nine, just kind of to outline the significant risks that we, so essentially, just to kind of give you an idea here, a significant risk is just an area where we focused in additional procedures to try and ensure that there would be no material misstatements within those, within those balances. The significant risks we considered were management overriding controls as well as the hotel revenue completeness risk. Since you guys are having that managed by a third party, we just wanted to make sure that they're reporting all the revenue that they're supposed to. Significant estimates that we looked at would be the depreciable life of capital assets, fair value investments, the net pension liability assumptions, the allowance for doubtful accounts related to your utilities AR and court finds AR, your other post-employment benefits as well as the claims liabilities related to your workers' compensation, healthcare, and any other types of self-insured risk that you guys are engaged in. In terms of new accounting principles, on page ten, you had one this year. That was GASB statement number seventy-seven relating to tax abatements. There, you guys, there was no abated taxes that Midwest City had. Just a quick overview of what this standard does. Essentially, it just tells you if there's any tax revenue that you aren't recognizing because you have given a benefit to somebody to locate within your city, county, whatever. It allows, it basically is disclosing what that break that you gave was because that revenue would not be reported on your financial statement. So it's essentially what we call, what hidden revenue do you have? What hidden tax revenue do you have, which you have none? In terms of audit adjustments, the only one that you had related to the restatement. So again, that, a pretty difficult, complicated transaction that we had to kind of work through last year that we didn't quite get right. And so we got it right this year. Page twelve, again, these are, these are some other matters that we talked about with management. We had just some internal control deficiencies. These were not considered to be significant deficiencies or material weaknesses, so they're not reportable. But these are just other matters that we thought would be of interest to the council as well as management. Reviewing the SOC one, which is an internal control report, just having those reviewed by management for any TPA or third-party administrators that you have related to any healthcare plan, workers' compensation plan. Generally, they have an internal control report that they have prepared by another auditor that lists out different controls that you have to have at the city to ensure that those, to ensure... to ensure that basically you don't have anything that's getting processed that shouldn't be processed. Uh, we did look at the SOC one reports, we didn't find anything, no errors or anything, but we thought this would be a good idea for you to go ahead and implement and start doing. Uh, also, the OPEB actuary is kind of discussing the discount rate earlier where he was using the four-point-three-five percent. Uh, we kind of, there's some inaccurate assumptions that he was using, uh, and so that there's some things that, uh, probably need to be discussed with the actuary in terms of those assumptions and making sure that he's getting those right and updating them yearly. In terms of management recommendations, uh, we are recommending that the capitalization threshold, uh, be elevated to five thousand dollars from the current one-thousand-dollar mark. Uh, this is actually going to get you, uh, get to, it, it, the reason this is going to make things a little easier for you is currently the federal, um, statutory requirements for capitalization of anything acquired under a, with a federal award money is five thousand dollars. So, you guys have, essentially, you have, what you're buying for the city at one thousand, and then what you're buying with federal awards is five thousand. And if it's a federal award acquisition, you can't capitalize it if it's fifteen hundred, it has to be five grand or more. So, we're just recommending that the city make that the same threshold. Uh, that's also the GFOWA, the Governmental Financial Officers Association, that is their recommended threshold, is five thousand dollars. Uh, lastly, just, uh, recording of the Gatsby thirty-four entries, uh, that are prepared by Crawford and Associates, we discussed this with management, it's cost-benefit analysis. Uh, I, I don't think that they thought it was a benefit to actually record those, it's not a big enough issue that we're going to say that it needs to be done. Uh, we didn't find any errors or anything, it just was a simple recommendation. Uh, lastly, on page thirteen, uh, we have the single audit report, this is the report over the federal award money that you received uh, from the related, uh, for any state or, uh, federal agencies. Uh, we do have an unmodified report there as well. We do not have any compliance findings, uh, no findings related to the internal control over compliance. Uh, those, uh, this audit was actually conducted in accordance with the following, uh, government, generally, uh, accepted auditing standards in the United States, government auditing standards, as well as the uniform guidance, which is the standard for the Single Audit Act. Uh, you had one major program, and that was a community, uh, Community Development Block Grant, CDBG. Uh, the threshold that we had for type A programs was seven-hundred-and-fifty grand, uh, you didn't have any type A programs, uh, you just had one type B, and that was the CDBG grant. Uh, with that, I'll actually entertain any questions, if you guys have them.
So, the correct verbiage is now unmodified instead of unqualified?
That, yes, that is the verbiage now, uh, I have no idea why it changed.
Makes more sense.
I guess, I would probably agree with that.
Are there any questions?
I just have a sort of question slash comment, so.
Sure.
From looking at your report findings. It appears that, um, the city did well and that, um, our, uh, our finance department led by Christie's, uh, leadership is doing a fantastic job for us. You, you see these all the time in, in a variety of contexts, and so, they, sort of, it's kind of like the, uh, the old teacher added to the list, red, red pen you have to use.
Yeah.
The better you're doing, so.
I'll just put it this way, I've, I've been doing city audits for, um, eight years now, uh, different cities throughout the state. And I will tell you that, number one, I don't have one single city that I work with that has fifty percent of their staff as a CPA, that just does not happen. I don't think we have fifty percent at our firm, to be honest with you. But, I will also say, they do a fantastic job. Uh, things are right, they are accurate, we get things timely, we work through everything, they really, really want to get it right. Uh, I have been working with Frank for a very long time, um, even predating Christie, he has been an absolute joy to work with, he does a great job. So, um, what I would say is, you guys are very fortunate because there's not a lot of people that actually go into the accounting field on the government side that actually are really, really, really good at this, and you have a lot of them, so, kudos.
So, I'm going to first ask Mr. Henson to convey our thanks and appreciation to all the right folks. Um, and I think I'm safe in speaking on behalf of all of us to convey that thanks and appreciation. And then I'm going to move that we accept this audit.
Second. I have a motion and a second, and you can go ahead and say that Midwest City is number one.
I have, I have three other clients, I, I don't want to. I'm on record.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Abstention, motion carries, next item.
This is discussion considera- uh, discussion and consideration of a resolution relating to the incurring of indebtedness by the trustees of the Midwest City Economic Development Authority waiving competitive bidding and authorizing the sale of bonds at a discount, approving a bond placement agreement, and authorizing such other documents as be ne- as may be necessary or required. Greg?
Um, thank you, what this is, the city has to basically bless every trust that it, that, uh, has the city as the beneficiary. They have to authorize and, and concur with indebtedness, so, that's basically all this is. It's the same song, it's just, it just takes the same action and you're done.
This just seals the deal on everything else we've been talking about, correct?
Correct. And I want to make one little accolade, too.
Yes, sir.
Your, your financial, your finance department is amazing, they are very responsive to us. And everything I talk about, I've said this to be the third or fourth time, whenever you have that type of efficiency, it does nothing but drive the interest rates down. So, I want to, I want to also, and the only last comment is, the difference between an actuary and a CPA is a CPA will actually look at your shoes while they talk to you, so, if you have any questions.
Move to approve. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
The only clarification, is it supposed to say bond placement agreement on this item, or is it supposed to say bond purchase agreement on? So, that needs to be clarified on.
Bond purchase, correct.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Move to approve.
And again, this is, we just, with, yes, and we should do a, uh, roll call.
Ward one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yep.
Five?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes. Motion carries, next item.
This is discussion consideration of a resolution relating to the incurring of indebtedness by the trustees of the Midwest City Municipal Authority, approving a replenishment agreement, uh, and authorizing such other documents as may be necessary or required.
And again, this is the final item on everything that we've done from the city side, sealing the deal with the, uh, the trust and, and, uh, what we've done so far. Move to approve. I have mo- a motion and a second, any further discussion? Any further discussion, hearing none, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? That's the last discussion item, no other item on the agenda, I hereby show us adjourned. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.